With the special meeting of the city council budget workshop for Thursday, May 16th. At this time, can we have the rule call, please?
Here.
Here.
Here. Okay, next, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move to citizens communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. I'm not going to read this whole monologue. I don't know if there's anybody from the public here other than staff. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we will move to the discussion item. We have one this evening. It's the preliminary draft budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, staff, and public that's not here. This evening, we'll be going over the draft budget. First off, I want to thank the finance department and their team for all their work and also the departments for the work to get to this point. It's a lot of work to get here, and it's not done. There's still a lot of work left to do. But per council direction, back on the goal-setting meeting to do a workshop before we finalize. So this is, in essence, our check-in with a document that is, I would say, somewhere in the 80%-ish range of completion. So like I said, it's a lot of work left to do, but the framework is put together. So as we go through this, feel free to stop me at any point with any questions that you have, and we can get into as much detail that you'd like. It's just a rough overview of how the slides are put together this evening. Used basically the same format that we'd used previously in 2017, the last time we did a workshop of this nature. So we'll jump right into kind of where we stand with our current budget. So big picture, beginning balance, fund balance of 4.5 million. The projected revenues, a little bit above budget at 25.9, expenses at 25.8. So we're expecting, based on the current projections, to add a little over $100,000 to the fund balance and still meet the council's established floor of 18% measured as a percentage of the expenditures. One thing to note about both of those revenues and expenditures, they are reflective of the $2.8 million loan from the sewer fund. So that is included in both the revenue and the expenditure. So that number is larger and pretty big compared to most past years, but it's skewed, but it is, you know, referenced that action that was taken by the council earlier this fiscal year. So as I mentioned, the revenues, a bit above budget. The projected expenses to come slightly above budget, and that budget would be the revised budget that would reflect any budget amendments that had been done, you know, from the start of the fiscal year until this current point in time. Once the budget is all completed, we don't finalize this whole process until really September, October, when we get the final information and move into the audit process, which generally doesn't complete until after the first of the year. But as I mentioned, we do expect to add to the fund balance, be relatively close to that number. As we move into the projections for fiscal year 1920, in the big picture, the budget picture is improving. The revenue sides are growing, also expenditure growth, but that has allowed for some things to happen this last fiscal year. The council knows we did approve MOUs across the board with all of our bargaining units. There were some additional positions added last year, proposing to add some additional positions this evening in the draft budget that we'll discuss in more detail. The health insurance costs have been relatively stable, knock on wood, from last year to this year, so don't see huge increases that we were seeing year over year prior. So like I said, knock on wood, we all know what the health insurance looks like, but for now, it appears to be relatively stable. We will continue to monitor that closely. So just an overview of the process of how we got here from internally from the staff. So generally, this starts in February or March with the internal service funds. So I mentioned kind of the four big ones that are worked on there. Fleet, the two aspects of fleet, IT, building maintenance, then the fixed cost allocations. Finance puts those together, and then that is given to the departments. They create their needs. That is put back together by the finance department. That draft document is then provided to myself for review, and then I review that with each department, make edits, corrections, a roll-up. And that first draft was presented to me in April 26th. There was a rough deficit between expenditures and revenues of about 1.3 million. After the completion of those reviews and some adjustments to the revenue and the expenditures, the draft, as it's currently presented, is roughly balanced. We'll get into those details in a little bit more, but all in all, as we presented to you this evening, it meets the past year's expectations from the council of the minimum 18% for the reserves and being balanced. So first, we'll discuss the revenues. So we've seen this chart many times. We've been using this chart since, you know, 20, it goes back to 2006, 2007. You can see that large spike in both the expenditures and the revenues for the current fiscal year reflective of that fire engine apparatus, but also shows, you know, the current draft projection increasing, you know, being that $24 million range, you know, nearing double our low point back in 2010, 2011. A pretty significant revenue growth, also expenditure growth to go with it. Same information here on this chart, just split between the salaries and benefits and the, all the other costs that are goods and services, contracts, those type of things. So this just breaks that information out from this slide, which all the expenditures are in one bar graph. This one just breaks that bar graph into two components, just to show you. Shows you the relationship between the expenditures with our personnel costs. So our largest revenue source is sales tax. As this draft budget is put together, represents about 28% of the general fund revenue. Sales tax is broken down as shown there with the different components. One thing to note with Measure H, no problem, with Measure H, the sales tax has seen a pretty significant growth this year. And one thing of note with, as a special tax, Measure H, we get revenue from different sources. One of the most obvious examples is new car dealerships. For the special tax, so Modesto Toyota knows that special tax gets recorded to where that car is registered. So if a series resident goes and buys a car at Modesto Toyota, our Measure H is reflective of that. So as people are buying new cars in and around the area, that really benefits our Measure H revenues. And as we, I'll show you this in a little bit, that our revenues in Measure H were significantly increased this year. So here's the chart showing our sales tax. A few years back, yes?
So is it if they, any car dealership throughout California, then...
If it's registered here, we get that special, that half cent comes here. Yeah. That doesn't work on the normal sales tax. It's where the point of sale is. So of that sales tax breakdown, that breakdown where we normally get of anything sold in the city, the 1%, that car has to be sold in series to get the 1%. Any like Country Ford, but anywhere outside of that register here, the special tax we get. Lots of little fun quirks in sales tax. And the legislature continues to try and change that as things, if anybody watches the things the governor is right now proposing to not be taxable. There's just a number of bills that are going through of exemptions. Continues to change. So a few years back, there was a triple flip, fun little exercise at the state level that has thankfully gone away. So it's now just a straight sales tax. You can see our sales tax in the past couple of years has increased pretty significantly. Forecast between fiscal year 1718 and 1819 is about a 14% increase. It's a little misleading, partly because CDFA changed their process on how they used to, how they're giving us sales tax now. It used to be three installments and then a true-up. They've changed that to two installments and a true-up. And when they made that switch over, they actually shorted us a couple hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year 2017, 18, and so it's reflected in 2018, 19. So it's a little bit of kind of just a true-up process. So it skews the numbers a little bit for 1819, but it's still revenue that we are expected to see in this current fiscal year that we're in currently, and then the projection for next year. So these numbers come from primarily, with Suzanne's help, but primarily, we rely on Muni Services. They're the consulting firm that does a lot of work up and down the state for many cities that do a lot of the analysis of sales tax and what the projections are. One other thing that affected our sales tax was the cannabis side of things, and that when that became recreational or adult use, we saw a pretty significant increase in both Measure H and the general fund on the sales tax. The other big component of our revenue is the property tax, secured property tax. You can see that dip from the recession. As I've mentioned, one thing to note is the lag between when most people felt the beginning of the recession, 2007, 2008, and how it took many years for that reduction in property tax to kind of hit a bottom. And now you can see we're back to above that previous peak with property tax. So we showed this slide before, but just kind of breaks down what we get from a property tax basis, which most people expect that we get a lot more than we actually do. But as we break down George Washington here into the components, you see the school gets most of it. The education piece, ERAF, another 15 cents. County gets 13 cents. We get six cents. And the ERDA is paying off the bond proceeds, and then special districts the last. So we don't get much of the property tax side.
Much regulated by the state.
Correct, correct. So when Prop 13 was passed in the late 70s, what the state did was freeze everybody's tax rate and their distribution on the basis of where we were taxing at that point in time. So for counties like Stanislas who were, had a low property tax basis, we were locked in at that point in time. And so that is across the state. So it's one of those challenges that we have. There's a couple counties, I think there's five, that are in the same level that we are that the likelihood of that getting increased at the state level, because you'd have to take it away from somebody else, and it's not likely to happen anytime soon. But it is a challenge. That same number in San Joaquin County is about double. About 11 and 1/2 cents. If we were to pick City of Series up and move it into San Joaquin County, our share of property tax would be about double what it is today. But not much we can do to change that, unfortunately. This slide, we don't have to go into the details here, but this is kind of how that assessed value and that lag that I mentioned, and how that changes over time. If we want to get into this, I've showed this before, but basically, the blue line represents the Prop 13 assessed value only going up, the 2% every year, and then if market conditions change, fluctuate, that taxable value can go down. That's what we saw, that reduction in 2011, 12, was a result of the assessor reassessing properties to drop them down to the market conditions. So for the most part, we've seen properties come back above, the value is actually above their baseline value. So as a result, they're fixed with their increase. Motor vehicle and lieu fee, also referred to as vehicle license fees, another pretty decent portion of our budget. As you can see, when they did a swap in 2004, it's reflective and follows kind of the same trend that the property tax. So similar to property tax, we are now above the previous peak from '07, '08, projected to be 3.9 million compared to that previous peak of 3.7. So last year, we're projected to end this current fiscal year right around the previous peak number. This projection gets us a little bit above that. The three cannabis development agreements, just put that in the graph this year to show kind of the relationship between the actuals we've received in 1718, what we're projected for 1819, and what's in the draft budget for 1920. So as I mentioned, that revenue, especially with the sales tax, is primarily driven by the work that Muni Services does for us. The rest of that is done by Suzanne and her team, putting together the forecast of revenues based on past experience. There's a little bit of art, a lot of science, and a ton of work to get to a revenue projection. And as most of the councils are aware, Suzanne's revenue projections are generally spot-on. She's proven to be quite an expert on the revenue side of things and the expenditures, for that matter. Future growth, this is one of those challenging things of picturing what the future looks like on the sales tax and other things in the future. So, you know, we've got some numbers built in there, but they're relatively generic on the overall forecast. The pundits and the so-called experts continue to point to a recession. Unfortunately, there's not real clarity or any agreement on when that's going to happen, but we have been in a pretty continuous, one of the longest continuous growth patterns in recent history. So we know what's coming, we just don't know when. And the last thing I'll mention is the development agreement terms. So when we signed those agreements, they were three-year terms. Initiated conversations with each of those operators to see what their appetite is for changing the terms. They have all expressed the interest in going to much longer terms. One was willing to go as far as 20 years. Others are more likely to do five-year terms with five-year extension type of things, but we just started that conversation. We hope to have those agreements back for council consideration in June for updates to those development agreements.
So they expire in June?
No, they're three years. So the annual review, we're trying to get back to in June, which we would modify the terms to extend. They don't expire, first one expires in May of 2020, second one is November of 2020, and then the third is April of 2021. So there's still time, but they've all expressed the interest in extending the terms pretty Any other questions on the revenue side of things? And I will mention on the Muni Services forecast, they provide three levels of sales tax, a pessimistic, a most likely, and an optimistic. We generally use the most likely number, and there's a range there based on their experience. Oops. All right. Moving to the expenditures. So as shown in the packet, this summary is, we've been using this form for the last couple of years, showing kind of the big picture. Revenue's on the top, expenditures there, kind of in the middle, the projected fund balance, the reserves as a percentage of expenditures on the bottom. As I mentioned, the $114,000 you can see there at the kind of bottom middle is what we would expect. Again, assuming the expenditures hit the way we're projecting them and the revenues all come in, we would add to the fund balance a little over 100,000 in the budget as drafted. And I will stress this, it is a draft budget. There are still things we need to correct. There's still likely changes in there, but showing right now a slight deficit of $40,000. But for the accuracy of the numbers that we have, it's, you know, in essence, a balanced number. We would correct that before we make the final presentation in June. All right, so before we jump into the general fund, which is most of the focus, I wanted to give a little bit of overview on Measure H. And as I mentioned, Measure H and the sales tax for Measure H has been pretty significant this year. Actually, I'm going to go to this slide first, and I'll jump back to that other slide. So one of the things to note there in the light blue at the very top is the revenues that are estimated for fiscal year 1819 at $3.6 million. And you can see where we hit last year at $3.1 million. Our budget when we started this fiscal year was 3.2. So that increase of about 400,000 leads to a pretty significant cash balance there at the bottom in the blue of the 906. So as we propose the budget as it's drafted, we're spending, trying to spend down those funds, as our auditors will indicate, and I think most of the councils indicated those funds were intended to be spent on public safety, and we need to spend them on public safety. This year was a really nice bonus in the fact that we got revenues that we were not anticipating to a pretty significant amount, which is a good problem to have. So for the Measure H, as those expenditures are shown, here's the current draft allocation of eight officers, one high-tech crime, seven firefighters and engineers, and then some one-time expenditures, which is the fire apparatus equipment to equip the new fire apparatus that was purchased last year. The start of the repayment of that loan, that's actually currently budgeted in fiscal year 1819 to start that loan payment, as well as the continuing of the loan payment in the years going forward. Talk about that when we get into the general fund and how that's split, and look for some council direction on that. Couple other items, tools and equipment, radios, body worn cameras, license plate readers are all included in Measure H, and we are scheduled to meet with the Measure H Oversight Committee next Wednesday. And as I mentioned, revenues increased. We had a little bit of a savings in some of the projected expenditures, so we do look like a pretty significant and healthy balance there in the Measure H fund balance.
So why does it look like in the 2019 projected and the 20 projected, we have...
So what, for the future projections, what we've done in the past is just projected the expenditures, the total expenditures for 1920 is what we would spend in the future. It's not accurate because there's a lot of one-time expenditures in the current fiscal year, so that's why it shows that fund balance going down in the future years.
But if you look at the revenue change, 16%.
Right.
So minus two.
Correct. We're using that, the revenue is projected based on the Muni Services. And again, because of some of those anomalies, we do, we're getting extra money this year that we would have gotten, we should have gotten the previous year. So it's a little bit inflated in the current fiscal year, so we're using our projection for 1920 based on Muni Services. And then for 2021, the revenue, we're just using a generic 3% for the revenue.
Is that realistic?
You can see the past, last few years, if we go back even further, it's kind of varied all over the place from 1% or 2% up to 7, up to 8. You can see the last two, 8.9, 3.8. At this point, with, especially with a balance of 400,000, it's, it's an estimate at this point. We could use a 2%, and it's not going to change much. It's a projection, but whatever council would like us to use, we can change that projection either way.
Well, to me, it just looks scary that we have 417 estimated, but then 34,000.
But again, the Measure H, we really don't want to be carrying a balance in Measure H. Those funds should be spent every year. So what would change likely through this budget process in the next year is those expenditures would be adjusted to reflect a zero balance at the end of the fiscal year. That's what we've attempted to do the last couple of years. Again, we were showing getting down to a zero balance in 1819, however, that additional revenue led us to a significant balance.
But then we also have a chance of the general fund beyond or below the...
You could, yeah, in theory, but it would be difficult to do with the way we're budgeting now, because we're really trying to focus on, you know, kind of the core employees that run through there, which is pretty straightforward. We've taken, you know, the other item that used to drive that was the fire overtime, and that's been taken out back into the general fund, so it's only the respective overtime for those engineers, firefighters that are in Measure H. So the variability of Measure H is going down, and we're putting more one-time expenditures in there, which are easier for future projection, right? So for example, if you look at the capital outline and the fire number, that $405,000, you know, that's one time, about $250,000. It's putting new equipment on new fire engines. That won't be necessary next year. So that 250 goes out right off the bat. Any other questions in Measure H? All right. So then just kind of an overview of your budget binders. And just a reminder, we would do like these back this evening so we can fill them, but the binder has all of the draft information. Fund summaries are up in the front, by department. The revenue detail is there. Again, it's draft, and then each department with the detailed request, the changes that were requested by myself as the city manager, and then summaries of each fund balance. So now we'll kind of get into the details by department unless there's any questions, kind of big picture. All right, so I mentioned earlier the internal service funds. So the internal service funds, these are the six, the equipment maintenance pool, so that's just for the maintenance of city equipment and vehicles. Then the equipment replacement pool, so that is the fund that each department pays into to replace the vehicles that they currently operate. Information technology, so IT operates, they create their own budget, and then that budget is then allocated to the departments, so it is an internal service fund as well. Workers' comp is handled the same way as a, you know, a cost that's born within that fund, and then it is spread to each department proportionally based on the department's allocation of risk and those costs. Building maintenance, also an internal service fund. That's the maintenance and repair of all of our city facilities, again, spread as an internal service fund. And last is our liability insurance, again, spread across and back to all the departments.
The fund summaries, internal service fund, 600 as a minus?
Correct. There's some corrections that have to be made there.
So is it going to be a minus?
No, no, we won't allow that to be a negative. There's some adjustments that need to be made there. She's trying to get the records, the minutes. She wants both of them, so we make sure we get it. Yeah, there will be a correction there, as I mentioned, there's a...
So when you do that correction, do you take it from something else that we're already going to...
So likely, the allocation that's in the draft budget is over-allocated. We'll need to make some adjustments out to adjust that. So it'll likely have a general fund impact as well, but that's what we'll have to balance between now and then.
There's a couple of things that have been... Expenditures for this fiscal year could come in less, and then there would be more to carry over. We won't have our final projections done for a couple of weeks, but by the time we adopt, we should have better projections for what it's going to be. And I anticipate that's what's going to occur, rather than having to make further adjustments to the 1920.
So recognizing, we put this, these estimates together kind of the end of April, looking at information that kind of runs, you know, data that's kind of the beginning of April, and as we get into June, you know, we've got pretty much all of May's completed, so we've got a pretty accurate reflection of what we think the expenditure is going to be. So we're more accurate the closer we get to the July 1st date.
You know, back in the day, what they...
Spend, 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 spend!
We have money in the budget, let's just go buy stuff. We don't do that anymore?
No. There still is expenditures that occur in May. If you look at our expenditure curve on...
On Westbrook.
Wow, called out.
That's disastrous.
Yeah, not even, not even a horn. Hey, didn't you hear nothing coming?
Oh, we're going to go spend.
So if you look at our expenditures by month over the year, May is traditionally a much heavier spend, May-June typically is, but a lot of those are contracts and other things that happen that point in year. But yes, it still does happen to some degree, but for the most part, we've really locked that back to kind of this wants and needs analysis, and this is a conversation just had with the police department based on where they're at of wants and needs and trying to make sure that we hold the line and meet that budget and beat it, especially when we get into areas where we've had challenges this year with some injuries, some overtime, those type of things, where we've got to dial things back, and this is the time to make those corrections. Right? Anything else on internal service funds? All right. So now we'll kind of get into kind of by department, and we'll refer to them as kind of the number of the department. So we'll kind of start, the fun ones are up the front, all the Department 9, which is non-sworn police, so this is primarily records and police and dispatch and a few others. So the internal service fund, as I mentioned, those get spread to Department 9 for this year. As council remembers the contract with Newman to begin dispatch service with them includes two new dispatchers that are in essence paid for by that contract, so those are included in the budget, and then one new position for a records clerk. Risk factors for that department, so kind of have that, one of the challenges in dispatch is the overtime. You know, it's a 24/7 operation. They handle a ton of calls, and that is one of the challenges. This past year is pretty much on target, but it is something that is a constant kind of review and struggle and make sure we're balancing there. So any questions on Department 9? All right, Department 10, so this is the police, the sworn police department. So this includes this year, two new positions per council's direction. Last year, we added two new police officers. Last year, adding two more this year with the idea of getting to what I call the special unit, formerly referred to, formerly known as, the department formerly known as the street crimes unit. We haven't figured out what that name's going to be. I'll let Chief and his team come up with what that name's going to be this time, but it is the idea of getting these two new positions. The 52 sworn positions are broken down, as I show there, the administrative staff, chief, captain, three lieutenants, and the administrative sergeant, patrol at the same level, 24 officers with six sergeants, detectives, five investigators and a sergeant, special unit and traffic, five and one, and then the SRO, largely funded by the school district.
So when we do the special unit, then we're going to add it? We're going to some other sergeant, some other sergeant?
That hasn't been determined yet. So it's not budgeted for an additional sergeant, but that is something that Rick and his team are looking at, well, what's the best structure relative to how we're currently structured between traffic and code enforcement? What's the best way to structure that team? So Rick can speak to that a little bit more if you'd like, but as of right now...
That will affect the budget as well, if we...
We're not anticipating adding, or don't show in the budget, we're not anticipating adding an additional sergeant at this point in time. That is something, as Rick and I talked today, that would be what we would hope to do next year. You know, getting to this, you know, recognize 52 sworn position is what's on paper. This, where we're at today, we've got three vacancies... This where we're at today, we've got three vacancies as it stands. If this budget were to prove, we'd have three vacancies, one existing and then two created by this budget. Plus we've got two long-term workers' comp and a few other officers out on other injuries. So to get to this staffing is going to take a little bit of time. We can't get there just with the flip of the switch. When you approve this budget or approve a budget on June tenth and July first, we don't have fifty-two bodies. We've got much less than that. Any other questions? All right. Department Eleven, animal control. So the city of Series is a participant in the joint powers authority with six other cities and San Slos County and the San Slos Animal Services Agency. The big impact to animal services in the last really two years was the loss of the free labor that the animal services has experienced for the last nine years that the organization has existed through inmates who have provided a significant cost savings to the organization by getting those inmates to clean the kennels. With a number of factors that came into play, we've lost that ability. So in the last fiscal year, we had to pull in, and I say we because I'm on the board for that. We had to pull the canvassers. And canvassers are those individuals who go out within the community and knock on doors and check for dog licenses and vaccinations and rabies and all those type of things. And so that drives a significant amount of revenue to the agency. And any revenue that's generated in Series goes straight to our bottom line of what we're on the hook to pay for. So as a result of that change and the free labor going away, those canvassers came in, so we had a double whammy. We saw an increased cost on the expenditure side and we saw a decrease in revenue. So that impact has been pretty significant. The board did adopt the budget this morning. It was quite controversial. Modesto did not like the vote because it went against them because they were wanting some significant changes. But what is shown in the budget versus the adopted budget, there's about a twenty-three thousand dollars savings with what we have in the draft to what the SASSA board approved today. So there is a little bit of a savings there. But that is something that we will continue to watch very closely as those animal control numbers have increased pretty significantly over the last couple of years. Again, primarily driven by the loss of free labor with the inmates providing animal care, or primarily cleaning of the kennels. Department Thirteen, excuse me, is a code enforcement. Currently, the, the secretary role is split with fire. We are seeing a pretty significant increase in demand on the code enforcement staff. Obviously, council's focused on that. The second code enforcement officer and having a part-time secretary operationally, something we'll kind of talk about at the end. Operationally, we really need to have a full-time secretary with that division with the volume of work that they're doing. And that's something we'll kind of follow up. So I'll plant that seed for your consideration. It's not in the budget currently, but it is something that that is an operational need that we see as pretty much now. And we see it getting more onerous as we move forward if we continue at the same level of code enforcement activity that we're occurring.
We talked about the other night that why couldn't we until for six months or so, instead of just adding a whole nother body to the split where code enforcement gets three quarters of the secretary, fire gets?
They're practically getting that now. From a practical matter, the way it works, the way the call volume and the way the working activity, it's on paper, on budget is a fifty-fifty, but since we've added the second code enforcement officer, it's definitely trending more like seventy-thirty in terms of where the workload is. So it's, we don't, from our perspective operationally, and I, we can defer to Chief Weiss, who sits right next to her, that, that trend is already there. We don't need six months to see it because we know for sure we're already there today.
But I also don't think you go from a half-time person.
Uh, pretty easily actually in code enforcement.
Well, maybe in code enforcement, but I don't see how you can do that in fire when you have it in utilizing a person for that.
But there's other needs in the organization as well. So a additional secretary position, we would likely do full-time code enforcement position and still keep a part-time fire and part-time either, likely either city clerk or potentially finance, depending on how we structured. Yeah. Fully burdened secretary position approximately seventy-five thousand, depending on step and level and those things, but in that ballpark. Okay, moving on to Department Fourteen. Again, this is the, the secretary position is allocated currently in the current fiscal year as well as the draft budget, fifty percent. It's just slightly below that between Department Thirteen and Fourteen being the non-sworn component of the fire department. Department Fifteen, fire department, this is unchanged from last year with, so no, last year, if you recall, we budgeted for the chief position basically for January. So now we've got the, the chief position fully included. Three battalion chiefs, the ten captains. So in essence, it's nine captains and the, the staffing of the FIU. So the fire investigations unit that is primarily funded by the Lessin Countywide Tax that we get reimbursed from the county fire warden's office. Nine engineers, nine firefighters. As we've seen this year, we've had a significant challenge with the overtime, part of it driven by the vacancies that took much longer than we expected to fill. We still have one vacancy as a firefighter that is in background, hopefully to clear soon. Keep our fingers crossed. We have seen with the two new firefighters that cleared and got on shifts in February, March. March, though we have seen that overtime number on a per pay period start to drop and head in the right direction. We get that last firefighter hired, then we do expect us at least to see some stabilization and hopefully, knock on wood, not have any injuries and those type of things because that's really what drives those overtime costs that are difficult to predict.
So when I'm looking at those position allocations, this is thirty-two, but approved this year.
Uh, let me get to that page. So those are previous. So the one was the change.
She shows the difference of fire engineer.
And that was the overstaffing, right?
That was the overstaff.
The overstaff that we had previously. No, the, that, that, that was that long-term workers' comp. So we were able to clean that, clear that off the books. Anything else on Department Fifteen? All right. Moving on to public works. So public works makes up a number of departments. So the Department Eighteen is the administration portion of that. Pretty minor general fund impact from the grand scheme of things. It's just an allocation of portions of people primarily. And then we move into Department Twenty, which is fleet. And the two components, as we mentioned, are the operations and maintenance and the replacement. Again, that's an internal service fund that's spread to each of the departments on a pretty robust spreadsheet that Jeremy manages. And we are getting better and better each year with some of the MMS, our, our management software that's tracking those costs. I'm able to, to carry that more significantly. Any questions on eighteen or twenty? All right. So Department Twenty-five is the sewer. So this is not a general fund. There's no general fund impact. As we mentioned, the general fund, fund balance, I'm sorry, the sewer service fund balance is relatively healthy. We are collecting money for long-term projects for the treatment facility per our sewer master plan. So there are some long-range projects. What's not built in there currently, and it won't hit Department Twenty-five. It comes out of Department Twenty-five at the, I'm sorry, Department Ninety-five, are the capital improvements, which are not included in this draft budget. It's going to planning commission on Monday and it would come back to council as part of the final adoption. And Department Thirty, the streets, primarily funded by gas tax funds. We've seen some decreases in gas tax in the last couple of years, which puts some strain trying to find balance there with our, our streets funds. The overall SB one has provided additional monies for gas tax, but they're primarily developed, primarily directed towards capital improvement projects. So the SB one, as council just adopted a couple of weeks ago, the money to go to the Whitmore project. That's about eight hundred thousand dollars. So there's, when you look at the line item, it's pretty significant, but most of those new monies are going to other places already designated. Any questions with, so we have in the budget the restarting of the street tree grid pruning process that's been on hold for a couple of years because of budget challenges. So we were able to add that back in this year. That's significant based on probably one of the most called-generated, other than code enforcement, street tree complaints and issues is probably our highest volume in public works. And that grid tree, street tree grid pruning aspect really helps minimize those calls when we have a program in place. So the goal is to be able to touch every tree that is a city street tree every five years. So you get that grid pruning going. So we're happy to have that re-included this year. Department Thirty-five, the water, again, an enterprise fund, no general fund impact. The water this year will be pretty significantly impacted by the surface water project. We'll see a lot of expenditures on the capital side of things to fund our local improvements that are necessary to be completed prior to that surface water project coming into play. And Department Thirty-six was created in twenty fifteen, sixteen for the water conservation efforts. A lot of the state mandates related to water conservation, we have to demonstrate our efforts on water conservation. So we created this department to be able to accurately track and have a good accounting for all of our efforts in water conservation. So that's our water cops, we'll call them, as well as the rebate programs and all of those. We have a good accounting for all of that. So when we have to do our water, our urban water master plan, which is included in the budget as well, we can demonstrate our expenditures on the water conservation efforts. On to Department Forty, parks and grounds. So this is the maintenance aspect of, of parks. Again, the, from an expenditure standpoint, it's third, third largest behind police and fire. And this is, you know, one of those departments that was really significantly impacted by the recession with a significant reduction in force. We are asking this year for an additional senior maintenance worker to get one more position back to help with that workload. Again, that challenge, we're still well below where we were in two thousand and seven, eight, but trending in the right direction with the addition of positions last year.
Do you know how many we had?
I believe it was nine. Does that sound right? Yeah, nine.
Seven.
We're getting there. Yeah, much, much closer, much, much better. So we added two last year halfway through the year, right? We did part-time and then full-time and then adding one full-time this year, which is very, very significant to getting our parks to where we like to go. And also recognize since two thousand and eight, you know, seven, eight, we've added quite a bit of park improvements as well. So, you know, we really need to be above where we were then to, to be able to keep pace with the, the needs of our parks department. He looks like my office, all those posted notes. All right. So Department Forty-one, facility services. So as I mentioned, this is an internal service fund. This is primarily maintaining all of our city buildings. And so we are asking again for an additional position here, that facility maintenance worker. As an internal service fund, it is spread across all departments. So there is a, a general fund impact here, but it is, we'll call it muted because it's, it is spread across all departments. All right. Keep going. So Department Forty-five is the CDRAB, the downtown revitalization area board. This is scheduled to be presented to the planning commission on May twentieth. For the most part, it's in essence a status quo budget. One of the, one of the changes that's somewhat of a placeholder in there is the maintenance of the new landscape improvements in, on Fourth Street. So we've got a placeholder in there of about fifteen thousand. Our estimate so far, looks like it's going to be higher than that. We're working to drive that number down a little bit. But that will go to the CDRAB on the twentieth, get their input, and it will come back as part of the budget adoption for June tenth. Fifty-eight and fifty-nine are both the former, again, Art is formerly known as, the former redevelopment agency. Those are money we get through the ROPS and it's basically an offset of the costs, a portion of the costs of the city manager to the finance director and the city clerk. And it also funds the contract with Steve Hallam as our economic development manager. Department Fifty-five, the recreation, you know, some of the changes where the inclusion, you know, the minimum wage increases have increased that a bit, as well as the TOT program as council's aware of. We also added some funds to that budget based on your direction for community events. The overall challenges, we're still seeing a challenge here in the community center of trying to get to balance. Does, we're heading in the right direction. And as I've mentioned, there is a pretty significant opportunity with a, a longer-term arrangement that may help to provide some significant revenue that would help that, hopefully will become any council for consideration in early July. That is not reflected in the budget as it stands today. All right. Department Sixty-six, which is human resources and risk management. So as a general rule thumb, it's allocated about fifty percent to the general fund and then twenty-five each to sewer and water. Primarily handles contracts. This year, the negotiations costs are a little bit lower because what's included in the budget is just the negotiations for the POA since their contract will end at the end of the next fiscal year. So there, there is allocations in there for the negotiation, but it will only be for one group since the other five have all signed three-year term deals. Department Sixteen, information technology. So the IT side of things. Again, it's an internal service fund. One of the big changes this year that is forcing Robert to pull out the hair that he doesn't have is the change from our groupwise platform, so that's our email server, to an Office three sixty-five platform. So we're moving to Outlook. And what that does across our whole organization is, I want to create quite a bit of a turnover, but it will get us to a better record retention side of things for emails. It will also have a better licensing platform for all of our office. We've, right now, we've got different versions of Office across, you know, two hundred-plus desktops that by switching to the Office three sixty-five will have a consistent platform for the entire organization, which is great, but it will be a heavy lift for the IT group this year.
So during our, we had a meeting, chief, whatever it was called, and we had a discussion about giving up paper agendas.
It's not currently in, in the budget. We're open to if you're ready to go there. I didn't, I didn't think based on that direction that you, that council was ready for that. So we didn't include it in the draft budget, but we can, we just.
I thought everyone was good with it, all the young people. Well, no, and I said I would be willing to try it, but I think all the young people, which was everyone but Klein and I, were.
We wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with it. We didn't feel like everybody was fully on board. And we also have some other challenges with that Office three sixty-five platform. It may be better to wait a year. My thought was it might be better to implement it with the next election and have that in place with new council members. But that's an, it's an easy one to add if that's something you're interested in moving towards now.
If there's an issue with the Office, whatever, we don't want, we don't, I'll have enough of a challenge without such a challenge like.
And we do have in the facilities, the forty, Department Forty-one, we do have some improvements in here for audiovisual and other improvements that we think are higher priority than that at this point in time. So we would prefer to get those things done, get everything dialed in in here on the, kind of the tech side of how the monitors and AV and screens, get that dialed in before we go to that. That was, that was our thinking.
I would agree with it.
Counsel, I see heads nodding that you're agreeable with that. All right. Department Sixty, again, this is the general city primarily. This is just contract services, legal, STANCOG, lead California cities, LAFCO, the Westport Fire Agreement. In the past, we've had TRIP, so Twalney River Regional Park is included. Again, per council direction, we have not included any costs associated with that. We are starting to get some pushback from the folks who would really like to see us rejoin our financial participation in that. But council has been pretty clear and I continue to tell them, council is not interested in financial participation. And the cost of undoing the JPA far exceed the amount of money that we give them on an annual basis if we were to participate. So they have decided, really Modesto and the county, to say, wow, it doesn't make any sense to undo the JP if it's going to cost us fifty thousand dollars because that's really the legal cost.
But what you and I talked about previously was.
Is there legal exposure associated?
Legal exposure, which is really.
So, and that's the next piece of the conversation that I'm going to have with city attorney to see what that is. And then we'll get a cost estimate from, from Modesto, what they would cost to, to undo this and get them to make a decision on how they want to move forward. All right. So Department Sixty-three is city council. Again, those costs are split, the general fund and the water and sewer. City manager is the same, same way with the allocation to the CRA and the SCRC. City clerk, again, similar split to the city manager. Again, with no election this year, there's a slight decrease. As I mentioned, we were talking about the secretary position. We've been able to leverage our membership with opportunity stand. We've been able to leverage our membership with opportunity standard, status loss to use interns through their workforce development program to help the city clerk. But there is clearly a need for the records retention side of things, laser fiche, all of those activities are really becoming a challenge. Public Records Requests Act are basically doubling or tripling every year. We're just continuing to see a significant increase there in that workload. So there is, there's clearly a need there in the city clerk's office for some additional administration help. We could easily, for the course of the fast fiscal year with a different intern, we've, I think on average, probably about fifteen hours a week that we've gotten out of an intern that's keeping them busy. You think that's about right, Daniel? About fifteen? It's varied depending on who we've had and how long they've been able to stay. The last one was, was really good. We got a significant amount of work done. We do have a new intern that just started in the last week, but we're kind of at their mercy. If they get another job, then they're gone and we're back retraining them. So we do see a need for some administrative help in the city clerk. Do you have those numbers?
What, what do?
Everything under the sun. This week, we got one for code enforcement. They wanted to know every open and closed code enforcement case in the last three months. Last week, we got one for council member Klein's, all of his emails for the past two months.
So when somebody does that, do they pay for the cost of records?
Only if there's a cost associated with producing the record. That's all we can charge them for.
So the staff time and getting it, we can't get.
Nope. That's a nice little unfunded mandate. And the funny thing is, is the state doesn't do the same thing. But all local agencies have to. And they're proposing additional legislation this year to make local agencies even more transparent, which i.e. means more public records requests and more work for all of us. Yes, yep. Yeah, so we're seeing a pretty significant shift from even engineers, planners, building folks who are doing like environmental assessments, used to just show up at the counter and ask for the information. They're now using Public Records Request Act. Yeah, yeah, it's. Ten days, unless there's extent, we can get extensions for those, but yeah, that, that ten-day timeframe is, is the general rule of thumb. Depending on the record, you know, plus the, on the police side of things, there's redactions, all those things, we got to review them. City attorney pretty much reviews every one of those, so we're seeing a pretty significant expenditure of time on public records. All right, so moving into Tom's department, since he got run over with the bus, well, you've got housing, building, planning are under Tom. Housing, this year, there is expenditure proposed that will be under contract services. And that's primarily related to, as the council may recall, when we did the Orchard Terrace project, which is a KB home that's under construction right now. The previous project had an affordable component, and there was an arrangement that was made that they would pay a fee per house that would go into the housing fund. And so we're allocating some of those funds this year, fifty thousand dollars, to do some housing activities that would primarily be done with a consultant. So that's included in the budget, but it'd be using those funds that we've already collected.
So in the contract services, it shows it's going to go up to four hundred thousand, but it's buying.
Oh, you're looking at, that's Department seventy. Yeah, you, you jumped ahead to building, but you're correct. Yeah, so the, the building, that's the best expenditure that we have. Because if we're seeing that expenditure on plan checks and inspections, that means we've got that much building activity. So we're seeing revenue to offset that. So that's one of those expenditures that we really like to see go up, because that means we're, we're seeing a significant activity. So that was Department seventy. Thanks for jumping us ahead. And on to planning department, again, split, primarily general fund, but it is split between water and sewer and for the most part, status quo budgets for Tom there.
Did I really scrutinize that one?
Couldn't find anything?
I tried.
So disappointed. And, you know, Tom's department there, especially on the planning side, is pretty lean. And an increase in activity obviously puts stress on that department. But so far, our new development has stayed relatively constant and stable. We haven't seen big spikes one way or the other, so that's helped us to be able to manage it with a pretty significant. Oh-seven, oh-eight, planning department had. A little different level today. So on to finance, pretty straightforward. The budget's in essence, pretty much the same. Bigger challenge this year is the implementation of the new accounting software in the coming fiscal year. It's already, in essence, been purchased in the current fiscal year and will be implemented in the coming fiscal year. So on to the engineering department, Department nineteen. So again, most of these costs are spread to a, a number of different funding sources, sewer, water, gas, tax, transit, AV nine thirty-nine, which is recycling programs, Measure L and SB one or two of the bigger projects. As we discussed on Monday, we are asking for two new positions here. Trying to move away from part-time consultant type of ranges to more full-time arrangements. We haven't been able to get there, and, you know, as the mayor indicated, hiring engineers is definitely a challenge these days. But again, these two positions are funded out of water and sewer. And the way that works when they work on projects, any project they work at that are not water and sewer, those projects are billed for those costs. So for the most part, all of their costs are accounted directly in the projects. Yeah, unless it's a general fund project. So that would be the only thing. So for example, when the engineering department works on the tower for police department, that would be a general fund expense, but it goes towards that project that's hit either general fund or for the most of that project, it was public facilities fees.
So do you think with the higher of these two additional, that contract services will go down?
No, don't anticipate it. The primary difference, what most of our engineering staff are doing is really the project management side, and we use consultants primarily for the design of things. To staff the engineering department to do all the design in-house, we would need to probably bring the mayor's firm over to do that. We would, we would likely need about, at least, in addition to this, we probably need three engineers, three draftsmen to, to deliver the projects that we're doing currently.
So the inspector that we have, is he?
No, he's a part-time city employee. Uh, he's not shown there because he's part-time extra help. He's shown under temporary salary, so he's not listed as an employee there. Our hope, because we know at some point he's going to decide to retire again, our hope with these full-time positions is someone be able to learn from him, get up to speed, be a full-time employee, and be able to take over that role when he decides to leave.
So then why does it look like our wage salaries are going up by seventy thousand?
Which line item are you at?
That's a number that's entered by the department.
I'll double-check that, yeah. Don't know that one. Daniel, we'll have to dig into that one. Okay, that was engineering. Then Department ninety-five is the capital improvement program. As I mentioned, that's going to Planning Commission for general planned conformance on Monday, the twentieth. We finalize that and it will be included with the budget package for June tenth. For the most part, most of those projects, again, are water and sewer. Don't anticipate any general funded capital improvement projects at this point in time. So that's all the departments. The summary, big picture, total draft expenditures, twenty-four point three million. Personnel costs are about seventy-three percent of that, pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past. When you add Measure H to that, about twenty, twenty-eight million dollars. Overall, public safety is about eighty percent of the general fund and Measure H budget. And here's the summary of the additional positions that are in, are what we have right now included in the budget. So two new police officers, two new dispatches, records clerk, senior parks maintenance worker, maintenance worker in facilities, senior civil, and then one associate or senior engineering tech, depending on what we're able to, to recruit. Did I mention the other operational needs there? What would be, what we've, from, from my perspective, what we need most operationally would be that additional secretary position. The, the need in the code enforcement of getting a full-time secretary is probably the biggest need. We do feel with where the budget's at, that we do feel that we can get that to work into the budget without a significant impact and still be able to meet the council's direction of an eighteen percent minimum and balance for the fiscal year. So with that, that's the.
Oh, so can we talk about some line items stuff?
You can do that. Now is perfect.
Um, so if we go to Department ten.
The detail, okay.
I have a concern when I look at the two fifty-eight post-travel lodging and meals, and it was reduced by seven thousand six hundred.
Which you're looking at, there's several two fifty-eight, so which one are you looking at? Yeah, so one hundred ten, two fifty-eight point zero? Okay, yeah. There's a couple of line items there. Just make sure we're in the right spot.
Okay, so that is when it's post-travel lodging and meals. That's for, post, that's for the police officers that are.
Need some level of certification that's required.
We want to take seven thousand six hundred away from that, but then I look up at here, and no offense, Rick, but we're going to spend five thousand dollars to send him to a conference in, in Chicago.
So what, so let me explain how that, the reduction, how that, how that worked. So in essence, what we did was that draft budget was put together, and as I mentioned earlier, that draft budget had, was out of, out of balance by one point three million dollars. So we went through and made reduction and changes, and then when those changes were done, there was still a deficit. So I gave each of the departments, well, not all of them, but a couple of the departments, the, the responsibility to come up with an additional reduction to get us closer to balanced. So that allocation was given to the police department to come up with a, a reduction. So it doesn't mean that they're not going to do all of those things listed, they just may not have as much money in those particular items.
Then if I go to one hundred ten, two two six zero, which is training, and that was reduced by fifty, five fifty, again, I see that as training for our police officers that are on the street, detectives, whatever, for our, for our police officers. And I look at that amount, and I look at what is projected to be spent to send the chief to a conference in Chicago. And that's a concern of mine. I would rather spend that five thousand dollars that he wants to go to a conference on additional training that we've taken out of the budget for police officers. Because to me, that is more important. I think we get more money, we get more bang for our buck. And God forbid, we have another incident like we did in two thousand five. We lose an officer, and it would always weigh heavy on me personally that, did we provide all the training that we could afford to? And I mean, that, that isn't going to necessarily stop something tragic like that happening, but it's happening more and more across the country. And for me personally, I would rather spend that five thousand dollars for the chief to go to a conference in Chicago, put it back into the training for police officers. It would, it would, that's just me.
There's more money included in training and travel and lodging than we've had in the police training for many, many years.
I can remember when we were very lean and we didn't do the training that we should have done. And I'm just saying that.
What's included in there currently is significant. Also, one of the challenges that Rick and his team are wrestling with is trying to find balance, because when we send folks to training, there's also an overtime cost associated with that as well. So we've got to have a balance between getting our folks trained, and there's more money in here. But if council wants to make that adjustment, that's, that's easy. Seven thousand dollars, that's, that's easy.
Well, again, I would rather take the five thousand dollars away from going to a conference in Chicago for one person, put it back where I believe it's going to affect a lot more people. That's because I'm also looking, there's still, there's still.
Well, I can let the.
A Cal, a Cal chief conference and everything else.
Again, the department can speak to what their, their training needs. I, I believe they've, they're confident that there's enough money to meet the training needs for the year, but.
The conference in Chicago is not just for me. It's me and another lieutenant that is going, so it's about twenty-five hundred dollar split. It's one of the two trainings that I attend. That's it.
Okay, and, and I can appreciate that, but again, for me, I can't see doing that. I honestly can't. Just me personally. I have, I have to be able to, be able to rest at night knowing that, like I said, something happens that I don't look back at this budget and go, wow, we took that money, we could have put it into more training. And again, training is not going to take care of every bad thing that can happen, but I need to know in the back of my mind that we did everything that we could afford to do.
I can say historically, in the county, we're probably one of the better trained police departments. Our officers get a ton of training, so there's not a lack of training. So much so that I'm thinking about pulling back some training to reduce overtime costs for this next fiscal year. We get plenty of training both in-house and when we send people away. Well, the conference is an international chiefs of police conference where we get to meet and get high-level training on various new up-to-date topics that experts from all over the world come in and teach us. And we also have the ability to network with different police chiefs and talk to them about challenges that they're facing in their states, sometimes in their different countries. So it's a rare opportunity for us to do that, and it travels. It moves from California to all over the United States. Yeah, they rotate it. Last year, it was in Orlando. Previous year before that, it was in San Diego. So it's one of the two that the chiefs do go to, Cal Chiefs Conference. We took our entire command staff there last year. They enjoyed it. Something I want to continue to do where it's financially possible, because they really got a, a better look at higher-level management and what we really work with. Absolutely, yes. And, and our mid-managers, because they're exposed to some higher-level stuff that they're normally not exposed to.
If you look at the, kind of the, the summary sheets of expenditures and training for, you know, going back to twenty sixteen, so fourteen thousand five ninety-two in twenty sixteen, twenty-two thousand and seven fifty.
I don't know where that is. Is it the back of nineteen?
It'd be, it'd be behind Department ten. So that detail sheet that you were looking at, behind that, yeah. Go to the two twenty-six, the training line item. So I can give you the numbers, but, so two thousand sixteen, so that would be the fifteen, sixteen year, fourteen thousand five hundred, twenty-two seven, thirty-seven seven. Current expected to spend thirty-six five, and they were budgeted with this revision at thirty-seven nine. So it would be an increase over this year, obviously it's a minor increase. But there, we are expecting to spend the same level of training this fiscal year, which is, you know, two and a half times what we were spending in twenty sixteen.
I, I think it's important to train at all levels and, um, if, if we're feeling that there's adequate training. So there was some training that was provided even to the council for emergency management. And, you know, not, not a lot of that has been addressed. And, and so someone could make the argument, well, we shouldn't be going to any training. It should be at the lower levels. But someone might say, well, what training do we have if we were in? It should be at the lower levels, but someone might say, well, what training do we have if we were in a crisis situation and how would we handle it? Because we do have direct roles in what we need to do, so I, I can personally-
But you're saying we should go to Chicago?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm just saying that I think that, you know, it's also important that, that leadership has some training and, you know, and I, and, you know, as a, as a sidebar, we as mayors meet once a month and we do interact, and there's a lot of stuff that I do pick up from them that are going on in their jurisdictions that I may not necessarily know, and, and so it does help prepare for that, so I, I can support it. I guess it's all, it's your decision then, because I, I don't think Linda wants to and I will, so-
No, I, I think Chief Paul is very clear on what it is, and that's going to be a benefit to him, I would say, or that as well respectfully.
Okay. Next, next sticky?
Oh, I guess that's me. I'm the only one with stickies.
I got stickies, but they're not questions.
Okay. The three eighteen point zero, wearing in safety apparel reduction-
Department Ten, I assume?
I'm still on Ten.
Okay.
So I, I don't understand why we reduced it by ten thousand dollars. Is that, when it says safety apparel, that catches my eye. Are we not providing what we should be providing?
Good chief.
Three eighteen point zero.
The ten thousand dollar reduction was the uniform cost for professional staff due to the budget constraints. And most, back in the day when I started, our professional staff wore uniforms and their MOUs say that we pay for that. That was just one of the things that we took away to help minimize the impact of the budget.
But it's not a safety matter?
No, it's not a safety matter at all. We wouldn't reduce something that had to do with safety. This was what they wear to work.
Okay, what about the electrical materials, batteries for weapons, radio chargers?
So you're looking at two, three twenty-five?
Three twenty-five point zero. We don't need batteries for weapons, radio chargers?
No, I, I believe, I can have the captain come up here. He did most of the formulation of the budget, but he can provide some further detail on that, on that reduction.
We actually shifted those costs out of one hundred and moved that over to Measure H, that equipment. So we're still getting the same equipment, we're just funding it at Measure H now.
Okay, that's good. Then we'll go to training equipment, five oh five, batons and defensive tactic equipment, gun cleaning supplies, and we're reducing that too. By, did that move to Measure H as well?
Yes, it did.
It did? See, that makes that easy, once Vicky gone. You don't have a question while I'm going through mine? Councilmember Con?
No, I don't.
Not at the moment.
Okay, then let's go to Department Fifteen, Fire. And under two eighty-six point zero, I think R and M is repair and maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Non-automotive equipment. That all looks like it's safety stuff, but we had to take some money away from that too.
Again, the, the department was handed a dollar amount of reduction that they were required to meet, and they made those reductions as they felt would best fit their department.
And Chief Wise, you don't, that, that doesn't have any impact on safety for our firefighters?
Confirming two eighty-six?
Two eighty-six point zero, it's the R and M non-automotive equipment. It's got calibration, Hearst tool parts and repairs, chainsaw blade repair.
Yeah, we'll be good in that category. Some, some of the tests, we don't have to do this year, and they're, some are bi-annual tests, some tests are every four years, so we'll be fine.
And medical supplies, that doesn't really affect our firefighters? That's really just what they carry on the trucks for emergencies? That would be three oh five. Says page six.
Yeah, this is, this is the medical supplies we use for medical aids, and then we get reimbursed from AMR.
Okay. Wearing in safety apparel, again, safety apparel catches my eye, and we've done a reduction of two thousand dollars, but there's nothing that really, the two thousand dollars doesn't affect the safety of the firefighters? That would be three eighteen on page seven.
Yeah, we, we, on some of the items, we're going to be replacing the, we're going to give them two sets of wildland gear and an extra set of structured boots, and we're going to do it over two years.
And then five oh three, furniture and furnishings. Do we really need to replace mattresses with Sleep Number mattresses? We can't, we can't do regular mattresses, which I am assuming are much more cost-effective than a Sleep Number mattress? Aren't the Sleep Number mattresses those expensive ones where you get a dial-in, the number that fits you versus a regular mattress?
So what we've been doing is replacing a couple per year?
Yes.
We've been doing this consistently for the last, last number of years. The, yes, the Sleep Number beds are more expensive, but the, recognize that multiple people are sleeping on these beds? And so the, the Sleep Number does provide a flexibility of different people having a different bed. The other argument is you want your firefighters to be well-rested. But again, that argument, we've consistently replaced with Sleep Number beds. If the council would like to move in a different direction, we can go that route.
Well, see, but your argument doesn't really hold water because the number of people that sleep on the bed. When I stay in hotels, they don't have a Sleep Number bed, and how many people are sleeping on those mattresses?
Again, these are, this is, if the council wants to dictate that we don't buy-
I'm, I'm just curious what-
Consistently, we've done, we've done Sleep Number beds in this agency for as long as I can recall.
And I can see that, I'm the only one that probably cares about that, okay. I don't think I have any more stickies. Stickies?
Post-its.
How many recliners are we going to replace for three thousand two hundred dollars? Do we know that, Chief Wise?
I think it was four, but I'm, I don't recall.
Yeah, I think it's the same process, it's so many each year.
We can get you the answer for the numbers. It was three or four, I believe. Any other questions?
Just because there's amounts in there doesn't mean- You'd spend that amount, that's what you're getting authorized for. If you can find them cheaper, you could obviously do that, but use the money somewhere else.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so with where we're at, so that's the overall budget picture. The one thing I would look for some direction on was the secretary position. That is not included in there, is that something council is willing to consider as part of this draft budget or not? Do we need more information? Would you like me to talk to council members Duracit and Klein to see where they? I'm, I'm hoping to meet with both of them to go over this information as well, so try to get their feedback, just make sure I've addressed any of those issues that they weren't able to make it.
But you're saying now that Fire is actually getting even less than half?
As it stands today, with the addition of the new-
Less than half, but now we want to increase it and give them a whole position?
Not necessarily. What, what the driver is, is we see the need for code enforcement to get a whole position.
Right.
So that, that's what, if you're, it is, so the, the primary question is, do you feel that the code enforcement division needs a full-time secretary? From an operational standpoint, we feel that is necessary to continue to grow the code enforcement activities and to manage the volume of calls and responses that we're having, a full-time secretary is necessary.
Again-
So that's the first question, is that, is a full-time secretary in code enforcement?
My first answer would be that, how long has, well, I guess my first question is, how long has the new, the new code enforcement officer been working?
Two months, month and a half?
Two months.
Not even, about a month?
I think two months is soon, is too soon to judge that we need a full-time secretary in that division. And again, I would rather wait until six months, our mid-year budget, and see what, I would like to see if there really is the need for the full-time there and then the full-time in the Fire.
So, again, the, the code enforcement secretary full-time, absolutely convinced. Part-time in, there, there's other options as well. We don't have to have full-time secretary in Fire, although-
You're asking for another full-time position?
Correct, but that full-
And it's General Fund?
Correct, but that position could be fun, that could, position could be split between Fire and the city clerk as well.
Which would be General Fund?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the cost impact is a full-time, the cost impact is one full-time employee, fully burdened, depending on the level, somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars. Where that position is housed, I would see that as an operational of what, where the needs are within the organization. So, does Fire ultimately need a full-time secretary? I believe they do. Have they been able to function without them for a long time? Absolutely, and they, that's what they do, they make it work. But as we get to a better, healthy place within the organization, we're trying to meet those operational needs as best we can on where those needs are. So we see this need in code enforcement as the driving factor, and there's plenty of room for that administrative support that's necessary to move that between multiple departments.
Okay, well, I, I guess I'm not ready to commit general, general fund dollars right now for another secretary. I'm willing to look in six months when we're at our mid-year budget, but not now.
So should I ask the other two as well, or councilman Con?
I'm on administrative duty as well.
So the, the direction is you would like that to have a status quo? So split between police, are we between Fire and code enforcement?
Yes, yes.
Operationally, like I said, that's going to-
Well, if we find, if we find that, you know, you're not responding to enforcement, you know, we need to, we're having a deficiency.
We're already doing, we're already finding that today. That's why I'm asking. I wouldn't be asking if I didn't see that need to-
I can say that my observation, observations, Fire, Teresa, ninety percent of the time.
That's escalated, I mean, she hasn't been with us that long, but the additional code enforcement officer has really exacerbated that, that challenge.
And so if we were to fund that position, what does that do?
Well, we would make adjustments. We, we would, we would still meet the, we would make sure that we meet the minimums. I would not present, I would not present a budget to this council that would not meet those two criteria.
But what are you going to take away from that? You should have, if you can easily take away that seventy-five thousand dollars for this position, well then maybe you shouldn't have had that seventy-five thousand dollars worth in the budget.
This is a draft. I wasn't presenting you a final draft.
I know, and that's, that's what I'm saying.
I was presenting a draft budget for council direction and consideration, and now we'll make final adjustments to make sure we meet what the council is asking for. So if that position's not included, then we don't really have to make many changes. There are some things that we brought up that we need to adjust, animal service for one, and a number of other ones. But there are abilities to relook at, and we get final numbers as well, as we mentioned earlier, as we get better and better estimates, that may allow for that position, or it may not.
I think, with a line of questioning as it goes, I, I think what I'm hearing, and we, we as a council have to realize, our staff and the city manager is saying, in order to provide the level of service that they believe that we need or are asking for on code enforcement, they need another person. If we're not willing to do that, that's fine, but we can't sit up at the dais and beat the heck out of them for not responding to code enforcement if we're not going to give them the tools that they need. So as long as we're okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
So, but then I don't want to hear you up here and say, you're not responding to the code enforcement thing quick enough, because we can't have it both ways. We can't say, you're not going to have the tools, but we're going to still beat you up for it. So I, so just keep that in mind, because I will bring that up if it comes up. So as long as we're okay with the timeline, that, that, then that's fine. You, you, we, we just have to let, we know what the, the give and take is. And again, I'm, I'm okay waiting, but when somebody comes in the audience, we need to say, we'll get to that code enforcement fund as we go through the process. Everybody understands that, because telling us that they're, they're at the max now. How I kind of see it.
That's fine, and you, and you can remind me if I say something contrary to that.
Well, I mean, I personally, you know, I trust their judgment. I don't want to spend any more money if we have to. And if it, me personally, if we don't want to take anything out of the budget and we want to fund another person, I'm willing to dip into the reserves a little bit to do that. Just personally, because I think-
But I'm confident we won't need to do that. I, I'm confident we can present a budget to this council that meets fiscal year eighteen nineteen, ending above eighteen percent, and fiscal year nineteen twenty projected to meet that same criteria of eighteen percent.
And I understand. I guess, from my perspective, as I set up on the dais up there, I hear the concern from all of you about the importance of code enforcement and beautification and all the things we have going on, and they're asking for the tools for it, and we're not willing to give that, with that. So, and we just have to, we have to realize, we can't, we can't, it's a give and take. If we're, if we're going to ask them to do something, then we have to give them the tools and the resources to do that.
If I may, I talk almost daily with Sergeant Coley, who supervises the code enforcement unit, and he is one hundred percent sure that code enforcement needs a dedicated secretary. With the one month of the second code enforcement officer, the, the tasks have increased. And as he gets his feet really underneath him and attack the problems that we've been asked to attack, somebody on the support side is going to have to facilitate those, the backend of what code enforcement does. So there is a result seen, just consider that.
And it does, it does have an impact across the organization on code enforcement, and Suzanne can speak to the, the impact on the additional citations and how that work comes across her, her department. Having a dedicated person to be able to ensure that everything that's going through for liens and through for collections and through to the utility billing, all of that stuff, we're seeing that challenge, you know, across the organization. Obviously, it affects public works, it affects engineering. Again, I can't, we, we saw almost instantly the need for it. And if we can fit it within the budget, meet the council's criteria, it's an operational thing that we feel, especially with the council's direction and focus on code enforcement and light issues, we hear you loud and clear, and we feel like this is a pretty easy and really, in the grand scheme of things, relatively inexpensive ability to meet, you know, what the council's direction has been pretty clearly of additional efforts on code enforcement, so.
Well, I, I can support that.
So what I'll do with, as long as you're comfortable, I'll talk to the other two council members as well. Again, I'm trying to schedule a meeting to go over this whole packet with them in this presentation, so they've got it. We'll ask them a question, and depending on that response, it will be either included, and again, it will be identified in that budget on June tenth for council consideration and-
I'd be interested where you're pulling this seventy-five thousand. I'd like to see that, but otherwise, I'd like to wait to the mid-year.
I would, sorry, but if it helps, that position last, like just last month, processed over two hundred and fifty-four.
And that's what we're seeing, an increase as well. Okay, I got the direction. I'll, I'll reach out to the other two council members. So the, the goal again is to make these final corrections, make adjustments, and get this back to city council for approval on June tenth. So I'll, so I'll meet with the other two council members, and we'll return with a final budget for your consideration on June tenth. All right, thank you.
All right, with that, I mean, I will open up to the public if anyone would like to comment. Nope. Okay, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, as opposed to Monday, May twenty-seventh, due to the holiday, so, thank you.